So with that said, I'm going to call to order the March 31st, 2020 Town Council meeting. Steve Jones has an American flag on his thingy. I don't know, Steve, if you want to talk so it comes up?
Yeah, sure. If I lead a bunch of allegiance and I don't know, take it over from there, but.
All right. Go ahead.
I'll get it started if everyone wants to stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
All right.
Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Where we take which is stand.
One nation, indivisible.
With liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna get right into it. We have our first order of business is a public hearing for the consideration of a resolution to amend Chapter 12 of the Town Code Ordinance Number 84, the Emergency Storm Fund. I am going to share my screen. Second. And. Okay, can we see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Right. Mike, do you want to read the item summary?
Sure. And let me just say, just as a reminder, the way that we, under the executive orders for the way that we can proceed, we have to introduce ourselves so that people on the phone can hear who we are. So this is Mike Rosen, Town Manager, speaking. And for, just for those people who are on the phone, just so they know as well, there are two people who are recording this meeting, the clerk of the council, as well as CBC is recording the meeting. So all voices and pictures will be recorded. So for this agenda item, the resolution here is consideration of a resolution to amend Chapter 12 of the Town Code, which is an ordinance number 84, Emergency Storm Fund. Let me read what the language here. Tammy, did you want me to read through the entire ordinance? It's a little lengthy.
No, I wouldn't read through the whole ordinance. I would say just read the item summary there. Why we're doing this and that, and then we can just kind of go over high level.
Okay.
What we're changing.
So sort of to follow up from our last meeting that we had on March 24th, this ordinance, Chapter 12 of the Town Code, ordinance number 84, it's Emergency Storm Fund. It was originally created back in 2012 to have emergency expenditure funding available for storm events. I believe it was created out of the need back in 2012 after there were a multitude of winter storms. And there's a certain sum of money that's in those accounts, but currently it's only for storm emergencies, not for all states of emergency. So let me read the item summary. In light of the COVID-19 viral outbreak, the town of Tallinn is looking at emergency funding sources to pay expenses related to combating coronavirus. The existing Emergency Storm Fund would be an ideal source of funding to use, especially since the town is tracking all expenses for eventual reimbursement from FEMA at the rate of 75%. However, since this fund is specific to storm emergencies and not viral contamination outbreaks, it currently cannot be used for COVID-19 emergency expenditures that were not anticipated within the town's general fund budget last year. Who could have seen this coming? So the Town Council voted on March 24th to set tonight's public hearing to discuss whether or not the council should rename this ordinance to allow it for usage specifically for any state of emergency, but we would like to tap it sooner than that for the COVID-19 outbreak.
Okay, and the public, the public hearing was noticed under the regulations. So tonight is the actual public hearing. So with that, I'll accept a motion to move to the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Well, Brenda seconded. I don't know who actually, who actually.
Lou did it first.
Lou moved it. Okay. Lou moved it and Brenda seconded it. Okay. So I don't have my stuff in front of me right now, so go ahead.
So all in favor of the public hearing being opened?
Aye.
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 Lou Lubah, aye.
John?
Aye.
Kurt?
You might have to unmute him.
I don't think I can. Wait, hold on, let me see if I can find him. Hold on.
Yep. He's there.
Where is he? He's here. He's not.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Kurt Turner says aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Kurt.
So any abstain against, I'm sorry. Motion passes?
Okay, public hearing's open.
Yeah, public hearing is open. So at this point, I'm actually gonna stop sharing my screen because I can't see if people raise their hand in this format. So is there anybody on the call in the meeting here that has any questions or anything they would like to ask about the change in the ordinance?
So if I could just say one, one quick thing, this is again Mike Rosen, Town Manager. For those who might not have the materials open in front of them, the way that we had drafted the ordinance revision was to strike the word storm wherever it was throughout the ordinance and to replace it with the word declaration. So it's Emergency Declaration Fund rather than Emergency Storm Fund. That, that was really the only change. There is actually one additional amendment that I wanted to just run by the council for potential for tonight. So in the ordinance, under section Use of Moneys From Funds, letter A, which is Emergency Related Activities and Damages, paragraph one talks about, talks about who can use the money. And let me just see if I have the right area here. Actually, so it's A1E, Emergency Related Activities and Expenditures as Necessary per the Recommendation of the Town Manager, Public Works Director and/or Public Safety Officers. The revision that I'd like to offer, instead of Public Safety Officers, strike that and add the word Director of Public Safety, John Laitel. Well, not his name, but his, his position, Director of Public Safety.
Okay, so. All right, so that would be the only other change than what we had.
Correct.
So it looks like we've really only got a couple of people outside of the ones that we know on here. So if anybody. I think nobody's raising their hand to say anything.
Do any councils have any questions?
This is Brenda Flucy. I had two things that might be noteworthy. First, it might be worthy to note that not all expenses may be reimbursable. And a quick look of that, it looks like we're saying that all the expenses that we apply to FEMA will be reimbursed, but there's the chance that some of those, some of these expenses might not be. The other thing is I did look up at FEMA's website for a list of emergency declarations, and it seems to me that we've covered the bases by just changing the wording to Emergency Declaration. There doesn't seem to be anything that we're losing there. So, you know, it looks good to me.
Right.
I agree. I think like from, from what I've seen, it's the difference. I don't think it says in here. It just says monies received by the town from government grants, FEMA payments, or loans for emergency management. It doesn't mention like how much, right? Just that any money that that would be a contribution to the fund.
Right. It was, I'm sorry, this is Brenda again. It was during the summary that it's, it could be interpreted, it's someone who was reading it in the public, that all the FEMA, everything that we applied to FEMA would be reimbursed. So I just wanted to be clear that even though we're going to put everything we can, try to apply for everything we can, we might not get everything.
Yep.
That's correct. Thank you.
Anybody else? Actually, on the governor's call, a question did come up about whether or not, Dr. Willett, you might know something more about this, but I know it came up whether or not they were going to allow the school expenses for going to the online platform to be covered under FEMA. And they said that they were still looking into that, that they weren't, they didn't, it didn't seem hopeful. But they said they maybe, with a strong emphasis on May. So I would assume that we're tracking everything from the school's perspective also, just in case we can get some kind of reimbursement for that.
We are, we should, you know, we'll be able to provide any financial that is needed for that. But yeah, the May was heavily emphasized in the questions that I asked too, so.
Yeah, they literally said May, strong May. Okay.
I got that too.
Okay. Is anybody else in the public that is on, we have like 17 participants, not all Town Council people. So anybody else? I see. Hold on. Lou have a question?
Yeah, well Tammy, that's Lou Lubah, that John, Chief Laitel and I have been taking a look at this information over at the EOC. And that that's the same thing that we have, that it's looking like the FEMA is updating their, their information basically on a recurring basis, but that, that there's no guarantee at this point. But it's something that it looks like there's a very strong possibility. As that, I think that's about the best we can say. John, would you agree with that?
Yeah, the FEMA briefings, we're hoping it's gonna come out next week from Dana, who's a FEMA expert that does the Connecticut Region Three experts. So he'll have their briefings next week, and I think they'll have at least a list of items. But like I said, it's all, it's all up in the air, and I think the best way to do is like what everybody's doing is just tracking everything right now. So we have it. So at least we can be ready for it.
Yep. Track it, have it, submit it, hope for the best. All right, Steve? Steve has a question. Steve Jones?
He had one quick question. Yeah, Steve Jones. I don't know if you'd know, Mike, it might be a Mike Wilkinson question, but how do we initially appropriate funds to create the initial storm fund? I don't know if Chief Laitel knows.
Go ahead, John, if you know the answer.
So basically what ended up happening is back in 2010, 11, we as a town started having these storms and related events. And it was the thought process with the prior Town Manager and Council that when we're like where we are right now, we're depleting our, our fund balance as far as operating expenses and everything else wise. So as we did this, obviously my office ended up taking the lead and, and then getting in, you know, over almost a couple million dollars worth of different storms over the last couple of years. And we said, why don't we create something where we have a fund to tap where we are now? So it wouldn't drain out operating budgets or anything else, because, you know, everybody thinks the FEMA reimbursement. And I can tell you from the past storms, I just closed out a storm from 2014 or 15, I think, just about six months ago for the final closure of the storm. So a lot of these FEMA reimbursements take, you know, could take up to a year or more once you close out the declaration. So, you know, we wanted to create a fund to at least have something to go to. So we took some of the money from all the reimbursements that we got throughout the past storms and community events, and we posted and we put it in this account, if that makes sense.
Yep, that makes sense. I just wanted to know if, if we regularly resupplied that fund? And if there's an appropriate level that we should have for the fund, like an ideal dollar amount for a minimum or maximum? I think there's a maximum in place. I don't know if there's a minimum that we should have as set.
Yeah, no, if it was something from my end, I mean, every storm and every event's gonna be different. And I mean that this is something where we're trying to be proactive right now, which I think is very aggressive on the Town Manager and the council's, you know, motion right now, because this is gonna hit again. And I think if we end up doing this right now, at least we'll be in a better place next year if it ends up hitting. Then again, we've had a nice couple of years without a major snow event. That, that's where a lot of those storms and related events took a lot of the toll for money and salt and services. So, you know, if it was me, keep it around 100,000, but then again, you know, these storms could end up being a very detrimental where we are right now, virtual reality, where we headed by, you know, computers and laptop or something else. So expenses kind of vary and a different aspect, if that makes sense.
Yep. And then we're currently at about 180,000? Or is it less than that?
Yeah, it's about, I think it was 176, and there's a portion of it that's, there's town and school. There's designated amounts. It's mostly town, though.
Okay.
All right, Brenda has her hand up?
Yes, I think we need to tell people who are dialing in on the phone how to raise their hand.
Star nine.
Star nine if you're on the phone. And if you are in the meeting, remember there's the chat function. If you hit your chat button, you can put a question in the chat function. Or if you go and put your cursor near your name and click, oh, that's like to mute everybody. If you, oops, sorry, I just did that. You can raise your hand. Where the heck's the, oh, I'm on host, so I can't see the raised hand. It's just a button that says you can raise hand. Okay, um, let's see. I have to mute a couple of people. Hold on.
Yeah, we're getting some background noise.
Yeah, I'm looking to see who else. I think I've got everybody else pretty much muted. Okay.
So just whenever, when you're ready to make the motion, if you should do it as amended tonight. So just striking the Public Safety Officers and replacing with Director of Public Safety.
Okay, we just had some more people join. So if anybody else that just joined may want to have anything to say about this public hearing item, I'll give you guys a minute if you want to either put it in chat that you have a question or raise your hand if you can. If you're good with figuring out how to do that, we'll give you guys a, a minute to see if you want something to say. All right, nobody said anything. So with that, then Steve, do you?
Yep, Steve Jones, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Brenda Flucy, second.
All those in favor, actually, I'm gonna go around. Brenda?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Okay, any, nobody, nobody objects or abstain, so the motion passes. We close the public hearing. That gets us back to us. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments from the council on this, this change?
I can just also say that the change will go into effect. Takes 15 days from when it's posted in the JI. So assuming that the, this gets posted in the JI the next day or two, the change would take effect 15 days from then.
So probably right when we're gonna be needing overtime and everything else. So that would work out. Okay. All right, I don't think anybody else has anything else. So Steve?
I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution to change the ordinance as amended.
Brenda Flucy, second.
Okay, I'm gonna go around the room again. Brenda?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Lisa?
As amended.
As amended. And that gets us to item number three, which is COVID-19 update. Again, I want to thank John, Rob, and Dr. Willett for being on the meeting and giving us some more of your time to kind of give us just a high level since we met last week, just an update on where we are and anything we can help with.
So Mike Rosen, Town Manager, I'm gonna just start and just say a couple of updates since last week. So again, we are still in, the town is in a state of emergency under public preparedness and public help. We've been in a state of emergency for over two weeks now. And in that time, we've been trying to be both reactive and proactive to changing things and doing things that are forward-looking and also increase social distancing. As many of you know, we've had very regular communications between the Town EOC staff. I've seen a lot of John and Rob and Walt in the last few days, and it's good, though. We're communicating very often. We're on twice daily calls right now, where the EOC staff does morning briefings and afternoon wrap-ups. Some changes since last week, the Town Hall and the library have undergone a deep cleaning over the weekend. So it takes, it took a few hours. I think it took 30 hours to clean all of those two buildings. And we also implemented on the Town Hall side and some of the other administrative functions, a work at home program for some of the staff on an alternating basis so that not everyone is at Town Hall. Some people are at home working and doing specific job functions from home. And then those people will come back to work next week, and then other people will go home. This is all in the spirit of social distancing. Other communities have done something of this nature as well, and we're following suit. We've put out several press releases with some updates. People may know by now, but not only are playgrounds closed, but basketball courts and tennis courts are also going to be closed as of tomorrow. We've, there were some instances of people that were not adhering to social distancing. I think one of recreation employees said that there were 12 people on a court at one point, and they had to break it up, break up the party. So, you know.
That was here, Mike? That wasn't in Tallinn?
Yes, in Tallinn. Yeah, it was a pickleball.
Don't tell the governor. Don't tell the governor. It's the basketball thing.
So we, we're, we're taking measures to distance people. We're not, you know, we do want people to recreate safely, but in small numbers. And please do it in open space trails and not in playgrounds that are confined or sharing of equipment or balls and things of that nature. Obviously, everybody else can give specific updates to their, to their entities. But I also wanted to share, I received an email with some updates from Jeff Gallagher, reporting on behalf of the clergy. So would you like me to share Jeff's points?
Yes, please.
So Jeff will actually be on the call around 8:30 tonight, but he asked if I could share a few things. So Jeff said he and his team have called the homes of every member and regular attendee of his church. So it's over, almost 300 calls to check in and have made arrangements for those who are alone or most vulnerable to be checked in on often. So far, everyone's doing well. We have added our list to the names given to us by River of Life and Blessed Sacrament and given those to the fire department, so multiple agencies are not calling the same people. Chief Laitel has arranged a weekly Zoom call with the churches to keep everyone informed of what's going on. They've been very helpful and informative. We have closed the church building to public use. This is the UCC Church. And have offered that to the fire department if needed for storage, et cetera. We have moved remote workshop, sorry, remote worship services, which we tape on Saturday and put on their website on Sunday morning, and anyone's welcome to view those services. They've created multiple opportunities for people to come together via Zoom during the week, meetings, book studies, prayer services, et cetera. And they also say food share continues to be offered every other Thursday. The next one is April 9th. This week, the count was about average in the 70s. And Food Share did a nice job of implementing new procedures which enable proper social distancing. And that's all from Jeff Gallagher. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to, Dr. Willett, you probably have a lot of exciting stuff to tell us with the first couple of days of online learning.
Yep, the, the first few days have gone very, very well, thanks to the, the efforts of the staff and, and the parents, guardians in the community that really stepped up to, to work, you know, do their own jobs while they're in their own homes, but also be there for their kids. You know, it's not, not easy for anybody to make that adjustment. And we're, we're just deeply thankful to the parents and guardians for really helping out and making it all work. The staff's worked very, very hard, too. Our resources and technological resources have been working well. We've got people helping at every corner and point that provided. So things have gone pretty well, knock on wood. I don't wanna, you know, jinx ourselves, but we've moved into the first few days quite effectively. We've done other things, too. We were sending two cases of Nitrile gloves over to the EOC to help in that. The lunch program, blast, five-day average has been 125 meals a day. So that program continues to expand. The USDA program reimburses for those meals, and an application has been made to the USDA for a waiver which should allow us to expand the program further beyond kids that attend, attend just the public schools to a larger area of the community. 800 Chromebooks have been distributed. We've been doing deep cleaning of the buildings all day, every day. We have a good group of custodians on. They're sanitizing many, many different areas, 30 to four different types of areas now. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to fully clean the buildings, and they're engaging in that activity. Custodians are working in a way that helps social distancing, honors social distancing, avoiding the sharing of equipment, individualizing supplies and tools. And so we've been effective in getting a lot of progress down there. All bargaining units are back in force in the virtual program called the Tallinn Continuity of Learning Program. And the stimulus relief package, I think it's called CARES, is working to pay the transportation salaries or balance for the year. But there's some complications with that that we're still working out with our legal resources. There's still some questions about bus loans, equipment, use for equipment repairs, oil, things like that. So that's being worked out as we speak. We're looking into the use of school transportation for emergency circumstances for the town and hope to report to the EOC on that soon. And finally, last but not least, there is a car parade in the plan, or in the planning stages. The town and the, and the board coming together to have a car parade for people in town. So we're tentatively working on that, tentatively working on that right now, but a possible date for that is April 9th. And, you know, with some, some sneak peeks at some of the, the town apparatus that are so exciting and some decorated vehicles on the, on the board side. So a lot going on and a lot of progress. A lot of progress has been made in a short span of time.
I'm glad to hear that. Actually, it's funny, because the other night I mentioned to my husband, I'm like, I didn't want to push John over the edge, though. I was like, we should bring the fire truck out for the, and play the Christmas music again. My husband looked at me like, you know, John Laitel knows where you live, right?
Everybody loves a fire truck.
Right? Playing Frozen? Come on, everybody does. I actually had a question. You had mentioned that the USDA has been made, trying to make a waiver for beyond kids that are just in the Tallinn school system. What would you envision that being for? Like, are you thinking make like other kids or elderly or expanding the program?
Expanding it to, and they, they will greatly, they decide ultimately who they'll reimburse for. But expanding it to the, opening it to the whole community. So that would be to any students in the community and possibly others. But until we see what they say they will, they will reimburse for, we're not gonna be sure.
Yeah. This last night, it was mentioned on the governor's call that somebody was asking about them extending the date to April 30th, because right now you guys are on the 20th deadline. Somebody also mentioned the fact that Massachusetts is looking at out into mid-May. And I know they said that they were, they were hoping to make that decision quickly. Have you heard anything on that?
I haven't. I'm listening and tuning into the same governor's meetings and so on. And, you know, I assume they'll be reporting that soon, but I would not be surprised at all if, if we went to April 30th or even later with all the information coming out about us just entering that the real peak of this has come. So I think we're probably gonna realistically be out at least till April 30th, if not further.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Willett? No, 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 no. Okay. Well, Dr. Willett, thank you very much for your time. You don't have to stay on. I know you're busy if you don't want to.
Okay, let's stay for a few minutes and then I'll.
Okay, all right. So I think that, how about Rob from Eastern Highland Health? Actually, you know, do we want to do, I want to do Rob last. John, do you have a quick update for us?
Basically, I mean, I think Mike Rosen kind of summed a lot of it up. It's just ever-changing. And like kind of Walt said, the phone conferences and everything else are ever-changing at nighttime. The nice thing was the article in the paper brought out a lot of community support. You know, Walt obviously sent over some gloves to the EOC. And right now, the PVE shortage across nationwide is what is really scary for us. But as well as for the, I'm nervous about the nurses and the doctors. You've seen a lot of stories of police officers or other first responders giving their mask up to a nurse or a doctor. So a lot of the nurses are giving their masks starting this week, and they have to keep them for one week. So this is scary. And as we all go through this together, there's been a lot of donations where I've reached out to the hospitals as well to say, you know, what's going on to keep us informed. And we're just trying to safeguard our staff and working with human resources because the ever-changing battle as far as the coverage for employees that the first line defense that is being exposed to this. So, you know, maybe the parade thing around town would be something that would bring up the spirits around the community. Everyone's going out of their mind. Everyone's getting discouraged. I just keep seeing social postings that are being forwarded over to me. I am on any of the social postings in town, and I will stay off of it. So I get them forwarded to me. But, you know, we just all need to pitch in. So I get them forwarded to me, but, you know, we just all need to pitch in, and I talked to the town manager tonight to even reach out to the local Big Y, because I know there's some concerns in the community as far as a lot of gloves that are being left in the parking lot of Big Y from shopping carts and stuff like that. So I've asked him to take the lead on that, and, you know, he's taken aggressive mode in the town to form a unified command with the council and a lot of our department heads. So a lot of department heads, and we're all working together, and this is obviously a learning curve because it's a lot harder for us, we're, we're working in a virtual reality. But we're, we're in a lull right now. We're trying to train a lot of volunteers and cert members. The biggest message that, you know, and whoever's listening tonight, if they can follow calling the volunteer list or, you know, signing up on the volunteer list, at least I can have someone touch base with them, because I think from especially our point, Rob Miller would touch base on it. But we want to make sure that we, we rebuild the list that we did way back when with the panemdemic flu plans and everything else wise, that we have resources in place to at least support the MRC and the medical reserve corps. If we had to get into more of a inoculation or support or status wise, that we have the sources and the people in place. So we're trying to build that list up. We're, a lot of people are working, but I can just tell you, it's no different than any parent dealing with, you know, Walt's done a phenomenal job with the school stuff and putting out things and the Google and the emails and the platforms, and that's all you're seeing lately. So everyone's inundated, everyone's, you know, overload, and we're all scared, we're all nervous. And if we all stick together and follow the guidelines and follow the recommendations and all do our part, we'll, we'll get through this. I think we've had a great community support to support the human services and the food pantry. We've collected a lot of food. I think tomorrow I gotta maybe just change the press release before the end of the week and either, you know, hold off for right now. But the dog food that has come in that were, was delivered, people delivered and sent in that Tina's like, I have enough dog food. So, but, you know, down the road, a week to two weeks, this is not going to be over. You know, there's a lot of different things where I understand a lot of town officials or state officials or public health officials. If you watch the curve and you go on the CDC and watch where this is going, we could be in this until, you know, May or June, and it's going to take a little while for all of us to pick up. And it's all those poor people that are either out of work or laid off, and it might need to be a stronger support system down the road. And we're trying to build a foundation in the community to support that, and if we all pitch in and do our part, I think we'll all get through this. But the main thing is to stay healthy and safe, and we're trying to build that from a unified command. So I commend the town manager and the council and the school and the board and everybody working together, because this is all uncharted waters. There is no page in our EOC book that says turn to page thirty, and this is what we will follow, and this is how you will get through this. This is all uncharted waters. So a learning curve, a stressful learning curve, I think for everyone, even learning these Zoom meetings and learning a lot of different things. So I can't commend the community and all the partners that are doing, and we're going to do our best, and we'll get through this together, hopefully. A lot of businesses are stepping up Gerber garment in town. We've had a conference call this, this week with the town manager. They're putting measures in place to provide and change their production to go to PVE. And we'll be reaching out to them this week here to try to repair some of the masks and some of the stuff that was delivered, to see if that's something that we can keep in our stockpile. But getting off the phone with two different vendors today, as far as PPE, we're, we're being told to fall. And unfortunately, I have to make some aggressive decisions in town, along with the town manager and the town council for approval, to either place those orders or get them in now. My guts telling me, and, and I don't think Rob, I think Rob Miller would probably agree with me that it's something that we have to be ready for the next wave that could hit us, you know, next year, and Rob would have more insight on that than I would. So I feel bad for Rob. I feel bad for everyone else. They're going through what we're all going through. So we're on overload, and I can't thank everyone enough for the support, and we'll get through this together.
So on your, your note of PPE and the nursing staff, I agree. I don't know if you guys will be able to see this, but that's my daughter last night ICU. That's the mask that she has for ICU. So I hear you loud and clear. So Gerber is going to be changing their production line to try to make PPE?
They're, they're in the, the planning stages of it. They have another person that reached out to them, and they're trying to make some space for another individual that has some machines, and they're trying to come up with a production. So they have a kind of ours task force that they have created, and obviously everything comes through as far as approvals and everything else. But everything that we've seen from, you know, FDA and everything else wise, things are getting, I should say, fast-paced or fast approval. So that's something where that could be a, that could be a win-win, especially for our community, having a major manufacturing place where, you know, who knows how large they go and if they need to expand that. It's something that maybe they'll have to expand and fill another void in town to take up an occupied commercial space to expand and hire some jobs and hire some people. So, you know, we're trying to do everything we can, and the town manager's done a phenomenal job to take the lead on it, to set up a conference call and follow it through, and we're going to try to support him with that as well. We gave him a couple of spots in town that are empty that we might be able to work, you know, a reduced lease or something else. So we're trying to work with that as well, but, you know, Mr. Rosen's been taking an aggressive lead on that.
Thanks, John.
And you mentioned the volunteer list and having people get on that. Are you talking about the medical reserve or just general volunteer? How do, what do we want to tell people?
So an unfortunate situation, this is one of those epidemic storms that our cert team that has been gracious. We have about forty-eight members that are certified. There's some cert members that are still working during the day that aren't able to come down and volunteer during the daytime. And then there's some cert members that are nervous because they're older that have joined. So we, we were trying to shelter them as well. But I might need drivers to assist if, you know, Bev's food pantry and Bev's services gets overwhelmed, I might need some drivers to drop off some. And we've seen an increase in that in the TVs and the, and the, and the other communities where, you know, some good people are out of their heart or delivering stuff. So we, we have a very coordinated effort among the churches in the town where they're taking care of their own. Bev's got her list. We've double-checked our special needs. I can tell you that the special needs list has increased this week, that people are signing up for that and getting on our list. And we've also increased the business list. So we're doing, trying to do weekly meetings with the businesses as well. So if this is a coordinated event, it'll work well, but I'll need some volunteers to maybe even drive my service truck with the trailer down to the food pantry to unload the stuff, because we're trying to meet the quarantine standards as well. So if we take in food deliveries and stuff like that, we're trying to, you know, adhere to the, maybe the, you know, three day or so, and then bring the food into the pantry. But, you know, it's something where I don't know, and, and in two weeks, we might need to have a bigger need for that for a delivery service or something else. I've only been reached out by two or three people in the community where there'd be medications that need to get picked up and dropped off at the house because they're quarantined. And, you know, sometimes they, it, it's, it's a privacy thing. Some people feel funny, but, you know, I can tell you from hearing it from my own home tonight, coming home and my wife looking at me going, why, why, you know, these poor people, these two poor elderly people tonight walking through Big Y. Maybe they're not on our list. Maybe they're not on a church list. Maybe, you know, they're a neighbor of someone, and this is where us as a community, if they can reach out more down the road, or they know the people that are in their streets, we need to do maybe a little more of that. I mean, I feel bad for those two older people. They shouldn't have to walk through that big Y because I'm sure they're nervous of bringing it home or being contracted. So it's something where I need a list of volunteers where if I lose my cert people, I can tell you, I've seen the change in environment at the EOC of having a few cert people come in wearing gloves or wearing a mask. They're scared. We're all scared. I think everybody's seen more people in the grocery stores with masks. So if we work as a community and build a volunteer list, you know, my hardest thing is, you know, keeping the Excel documents and keeping credentials, because there's a lot of confidential information down there. But, you know, there's a few people that stop down during the daytime. There's times and places where I just need someone to put over in a corner to listen to one of the conference calls that can take notes very well and just send it out. I can tell you, like, I've handed my phone off three times in the EOC for someone to answer my cellphone. So the days of starting at six thirty in the morning and getting done at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night are catching, are aware enough. We've built a, a great aggressive unified command, but this is a learning curve for a lot of new department heads. Mr. Rosen's taken aggressive lead to try to train and educate a few people. We've, we've also thrown out there to educate people that right now FEMA has a lot of free training. So if they want to understand the incident command system, they can take that, and it's easier once you take that training of tying into the incident command system and knowing how the operation runs. And, and who knows, Walt's staff could get overwhelmed if this goes for another two months with food. What happens if something happens at the high school with the food share program or something else, and he might need volunteers to at least stand outside and just hand the bags off? I don't know. But I could tell you that it's scary when you get a email document today from the region looking at what our transportation needs, what we have in stock as far as our transportation, school buses, vans, and stuff like that in town, to build a more of a regional list in case they need to have buses or transportation. That's a pre-planning event that only happens every once in a while, and I've only seen it three times in my twenty-year career here. And that list was delegated down through my channels and is being worked on from Walt's standpoint, just to provide that list. But when you start planning that deep, it gets you a little nervous. It gets you thinking more. So it's something that we have a declaration that's in place that the town manager, or if he delegates and delegates me to, we can swear volunteers in where they're covered, at least liability-wise, but we swear them in, they're credentialed. And, you know, obviously they take a, a form and fill out a confidentiality, and they're tied in with us at the EOC of the town or the school level, so they're covered on all bases. So we're trying to build that list up. The phones have not been ringing off the hook, because I think this is a different type of storm. If this was a, a weather storm, we would have a lot of people reaching help, and I think this is a different storm where some people are stepped back and hesitant, and I don't blame them. There's nothing worse than even myself dealing with my staff today of filling out these forms. The forms alone of being exposed are being overindated, and Mike and the HR department's working with us, because the forms that we have to fill out when my guys are exposed to this are just overwhelmingly, and it's starting to pose a mental strain. So, you know, there's been a few phone calls today for a few people that live in town that came from Massachusetts, and I can use them because it's cleared of the declaration that if they have the certifications, and they're also calling other nurses up. So I know we have a lot of staff and a lot of people in the community, and those are the type of people where we might have to tap into, if that makes sense.
So, so we can probably put something out looking for volunteers and the medical reserve list to see if we can get more people in there. The last question I had for you, John, is when we talked, I think, this morning about the daycares and cleaning needs.
Yes.
Did you hear from any on that?
So we have a few daycares that are closed in town. I think there was three off the top of my head that closed down. There's one that's on the other side of town towards the Extramart that is running low on baby wipes. The baby wipes are a hot item in any of the stores, Walmarts, grocery stores, or anywhere else. Those are tending to be cleaned off the shelves very quickly. So they've instituted a policy for a lot of parents to try to bring in the baby wipes, but it makes me nervous, and, and we're trying to try to reach out. So we gave them a couple of contacts today to reach out. I'll have a final list tonight or tomorrow to give the town manager and the council as far as which daycares are open and closed. But it's one of the biggest things that we stress from a local, but also a state, that a lot of these daycare centers, now that there's been new restrictions that they can only accommodate up to ten, yeah, in different areas. So we reassured, and we didn't go do spot checks or inspections today. We, we went there to say, hey, here's a new, you know, declaration that came out, and here's the guidelines. What can we do to help you? And it's something that we might have to look out farther and to build a dialogue like I've been trying to do in the community, the businesses. We might have to reach out to other daycares to have them reach out to other daycares that we might have to do shared spaces or something else wise, because a lot of these daycares are providing the frontline services for the nurses, the doctors, the police, the first responders. So they're a vital asset to a lot of us first responders.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Littell? I don't see any hands raised. Rob from Eastern Highland Health District. I always got to save you for last, Rob, because I, I really don't want to hear what you have to say. But can you give us a, an update of how things are going? I'm, I got the, the, I'm just going, just go ahead. Give us an update.
Sure. So there are actually some more recent numbers than I sent out earlier today. Madam Chairwoman, the state just put out as of one thirty today, updated numbers for the state. So in Connecticut, there are three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight cases. Six hundred and eight are hospitalized, and there have been sixty-nine fatalities. In the health district, there are twenty cases and two fatalities. And for Tallinn, it's nine cases, six hospitalizations, and two fatalities. In terms of activity and other information, in the previous day, we've completed eight case contact investigations. We've got six investigations which are currently active. We are transitioning our medical reserve corps volunteer recruitment, enrollment, and management to align and join the statewide Connecticut Respond Initiative. This is a, this is initiative being spearheaded through the governor's office and the state health department. It is, it is a platform to manage local MRC units on a state platform. So anybody, and anybody enrolling from the town of Tallinn or, or from any other town in Eastern Highlands would be automatically assigned to this platform to the local MRC. And I don't want to commit, I don't want to, I don't want this program necessarily to compete with what John, the good work John's doing with his cert team. So that, but that being said, if there are any medical professionals, retired or otherwise, that are looking to avail themselves of their professional skillset, then this, I would encourage the town to direct local persons interested that in that regard to the, to either our website or to the state website for CT response.
Rob, can I ask you quickly? What exactly does that entail? What do you look for from the medical reserve? So we, we can tell people.
So the question I think you're asking me is what could they end up doing?
Yeah, yeah. What do you, what do you, like, you need people in the health field and.
So for, so I envision, given this, the state of affairs, three, three, three or four areas where the MRC, in particular, the medical professionals could be utilized. It could be supporting the drive-through screening clinics. It could be certainly supporting direct patient care and some of the acute care hospitals. If our, as our hospitals start to get burdened, they may be looking to activate the MRC to support hospital activities. It's down the road, if antivirals are developed, they could be used to for mass dispensing of antivirals. Or as vaccines are developed, mass vaccination of the population with whatever available vaccine there is. So that's, that, those are the areas I see the MRC being potentially used. Ultimately, the state or local jurisdiction will make a request for MRC volunteers that would come through this platform. And it would be, and it would be channeled to local MRC unit leaders, of which we are one. And based on the request, we would activate our MRC unit and deploy them to, to the mission that was identified. And as I said, it could be any of those things that I just, I just, I just described. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, that did. Thank you very much.
We're also, we've also gotten updated assistance and guidance from the DPH on information to provide confirmed cases, and there's close contacts as part of our investigation. So we're using that new information. Also, the governor's most recent executive order restricts daycare operations to no more than ten kids in any single space and requires enhanced health procedures for all daycares. We're still kind of reviewing some of the details. I think some additional guidance from the state's going to be necessary to fill some of the gaps in the notion of what constitutes enhanced health procedures. There's some details in the executive order, but we're working to get that information and provide it to our daycare providers in the area to ensure that their, their capacity to continue to operate in as safe as possible manner. We also are expanding our contact tracing capacity. So we're reassigning staff, we're moving some of the staff, adjusting some staff time out of the environmental health services, which, by the way, are still considered essential services pursuant to the executive order from the governor. But those are slowing down a bit, so we have some capacity to reassign some staffing hours to expand our contact tracing, which I anticipate, which I anticipate will be ramping up relatively significantly here in the next few days. And we continue to provide infection control and social distancing guidance, guidance to area public and private sector employers and first responders. And that's essentially what I have. I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
So if I remember correctly, it's almost like. So if I remember correctly, it's almost like we're going up like a case a day almost here in Talland.
No, there were, there were two cases in the last, there were two cases and I think there are three cases in the last two days. But, you know, it's, you know, it's hard to draw any conclusions or even speculate. I mean, I'm not, we're not seeing any, any real linkages between these, in the cases individually. And, and while obviously these are numbers that are a concern. Statistically speaking, it's really a small sample size to draw any conclusions from.
Yeah, it's still, well, thank God, it's still small for now. Anybody else have any questions for, for Rob?
I think Pat does.
I can't figure out how to get in here. Can you hear me?
Did you raise your hand?
I don't, maybe not. This hand.
She raised her hand, literally. I can't see that, Pat. I can't see that.
Hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say that you all are doing a tremendous job. I tuned in to listen to the updates as I have been in all of the towns. And it, you know, Talland is really doing an excellent job. I know how hard the work is. I know how scary this is. I know how much, what a vast amount of information is being thrown at you all of the time. And you're just, you're handling it an incredible way. And I just wanted to give my personal thanks and admiration to everybody who's made a report. Everybody who's working twenty-four hours a day to make sure this town, you know, hangs together through this crisis. And I wanted you to know that although the Capitol is closed, still working. And if you need any clarification on, you know, I was just on the phone with Beth By the other day. You were talking about needing clarification of some of those childcare rules. I may be able to get those more quickly. So know that I'm here to help. And if I can facilitate anything for any of you or for the town in general, then that's what I'm here for. So just be aware of that and just you're doing an incredible job. And I just know how many hours it takes to get the work done that you're doing. So thank you on behalf of all of the population.
Thank you.
Oh, and don't forget about the census, tomorrow's census day. Very quickly, Talland is running above the other towns in the district so far. You're doing excellently. So the folks that are working on, on the census are to be congratulated. Because, you know, we're only at about thirty percent, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's above the state average. And it's above the average of the three towns. So you're the star so far.
Can, this is Brenda Flucy. Can I add something to that, Pat?
Please.
Talland is at forty-six point eight percent of reporting rate. By the end of the week, we should be over fifty percent. We have the highest.
We're at thirty. That's great.
Yeah, this is as, as of three o'clock this afternoon. We have the highest reporting rate in the state, so we're doing an excellent job, so.
Mike, you get pizza!
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Yeah, and what's really important about completing the census is. Information on disaster relief, nutrition programs and healthcare are all decided by us reporting our numbers. Reporting them accurately. So as we can see with the situation we are in, this is vitally important for everybody to grab their census invitation. And please participate, so.
And especially don't forget the children because that's the most undercrowned group. And the ones that, you know, newborns and all of those people tend to forget about. So be careful. Also remind people that they can do this by the telephone. They don't have to, you know, have a computer. They, and they're, they're operating in fifty-five different languages. So that's all I need to say, except thank you for your hard work. And for letting me join in on your meeting, though I clearly don't know how to work this thing yet. I'm getting there.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right, so long.
Let's see, so, Mike, did you do anything else to?
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna say, I wasn't sure when to sort of say this. But unlike a lot of other emergency situations where the answer might be to just throw more people into the emergency operations center. We can't do that here. We all have to socially distance. So the EOC itself has to be, you know, only five people or less. So the fact that we have this technology and we can do these things remotely is really an asset right now. We do have these frequent meetings and they're really paying off. And I also wanna echo the thanks that the entire team is putting into this. Everybody in one shape, way, shape or form is, is all in on this endeavor. And we're doing a great job and we appreciate everyone's support.
I'd like to request that we stop saying we're socially distancing and say we're remotely connecting. So, all right, I think that gets us through number three for the COVID-nineteen update. Dr. Willett, Rob, John, I believe you've got a birthday tonight or something. So, you know, if you guys all wanna drop off, please feel free. I appreciate your time. Thank you for coming. Actually, we have public comment coming up, but nobody mentioned anything.
I can wait if you want.
Well, I think we're gonna get to this next one really quick. So our next item on our agenda is consider a resolution to extend Talland's Declaration of Public Health and Civil Repairness. Until April thirtieth, twenty-twenty, unless rescinded earlier by action of the town council in conjunction with the President of the United States of America.
Hi, everybody. This is Mike Rosen, Town Manager, speaking. This item should be simple. Basically, the codes of the town allow the town manager to initially declare a state of emergency. For a thirty-day period, figuring that most storm events or things of that nature will be resolved within thirty days. This is again unprecedented. And so this state of emergency will very likely extend past thirty days. Again, the original state of emergency was declared March twelfth. So fast forward a month would be about April twelfth, which is, that's actually prior to our next regularly scheduled council meeting of April fourteenth. So in order to extend the state of emergency past the thirty-day point. I just wanted to ask council to go ahead and extend the state of emergency to April thirtieth. To be in line with the presidential declaration to remotely connect further into the future than expected. So the, the council is the body that can make such an extension. So I wanted to ask council to consider that this evening.
So a quick point of reference on this. The, it's in our charter that it's the thirty-day limit. And we all know, we can't just change the charter. So with the, this current act, what we would be doing is actually just extending the, the, the original one that we put in place.
That's, that's correct. So the way it reads is the declaration shall be effective for a period of time. I'm sorry, I'm looking at something that's a revision. But it's, the codes, the charter and codes say the town manager can make a thirty-day declaration unless rescinded sooner or by action of the town council. So by action can mean to extend it further than the thirty days. And then at that point, since the council is the one taking the state of emergency forward. You counselors can rescind it sooner if need be. But we figured, let's, let's give it to the end of April to conform with the president's guidance. And if it should be done sooner than that, then, then we can rescind it sooner.
Okay, so. Do you wanna go ahead and read the, read the, make the motion, Steve, and then we can discuss?
Yep, that's what I raised my hand. So Steve Jones, I, you're gonna make a motion to extend the Talland's Declaration of Public Health and Civil Repairness. Until April thirtieth, unless rescinded earlier by action of the council in conjunction with the President of the United States.
So it's Brenda Flucy, I second.
Okay, any discussion? Anybody have any questions on this? What we're, what we're trying to do or, or any concerns? Not hearing any? Okay, then I am gonna go around. Brenda?
I.
John?
I.
Steve?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Hey, motion passes unanimously, Lisa. That gets us through that and that gets us to public comment. Okay, there's twenty-something people here, including us on the phone. If anybody has any questions or comments, anything that they wanna talk about, please raise your hand or indicate in the chat that you have a question. And we will get to you.
Is there a button that you're supposed to push if you're on the phone? Is it star?
Our nine, star nine if you are on the phone. You guys a second or two here, figure out the technology. I do not see anything from anybody here. Doesn't look like anybody has any questions or comments. That gets us on to six, which is adoption of minutes.
Alright, so Madam Chair, I didn't take a motion to adopt the minutes as laid out in the agenda as six point one, six point two, six point three. Six point four and six point five.
This is Brenda Flucy, I second.
Okay, Brenda?
I.
John?
I.
Lou?
I.
Steve?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
All right, all in favor, motion's passed. The minutes passed, whatever, we got it. Next.
Well, that should be the easiest one, hopefully.
There you go. Once again, I just wanna thank everybody for, for logging on, being part of the conversation, all the updates that we got. Hope everybody has a good night. Take it away, Steve.
I entertain a motion to adjourn at eight oh five PM.
This is Brenda Flucy, I second.
All right, Brenda?
I.
John?
I.
Lou?
I.
Steve, that was so reluctant, like you wanna stay and hang out. And Kurt?
Miss you.
I.
All right, then, thank you all. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.